Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the Cloverdale City Council meeting. Sorry for the delay. We had a little computer issue and we don't get to decide when they decide to update. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:12. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call when you're ready, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. We have no report out on closed session. Any conflict of interest declarations? Seeing none, any changes or deletions to the agenda, David?
No changes, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments. Any person wishing to speak on any item that is not listed on our agenda may do so at this time. Please come up to the podium.
Hello, my name is Barbara LeBlanc, and I live on Elbridge Avenue. On April 8th, I sent a letter to all of the city council members, the mayor, the city managers, about Cloverdale's RV code 18 dot 11 dot 060. I'm going to read an abbreviated version for the public today. We have learned via the Cloverdale Connect newspaper that at the March council meeting, some members of the community want to have the RV code rescinded or altered. There have been two RVs parked on Elbridge Avenue residential driveways for the last year. A neighborhood resident pointed this out in a February meeting with Kevin Thompson. Mr. Thompson explained the process for having them moved per the current code requirements. A complaint form was filled out, and the code enforcement officer contacted the residents of the code violation. The residents failed to remove the vehicles at the end of the 30-day grace period, so the person making the initial complaint called the enforcement officer on April 5th to see how the process was going. The officer informed the caller that he was told not to enforce the law by a Cloverdale city worker because the code was about to be changed. How would a city employee know such a change had been made, when to date, no such action had been legally enacted? Apparently, one of the owners of the vehicles complained about the code at the March council meeting, or perhaps contacted a city official to do it for them. This does not empower the city of Cloverdale to then act as if the code had been changed. It looks like a favor was being done for a friend. This puts the code officer in an ethical predicament because this code is still a law. He has been told not to do his job, by whom and under what authority. This whole scenario reeks of cronyism, favoritism shown to political or business friends. The citizens of Cloverdale rely on you to govern by the rules so that everyone has equal rights that are not based on knowing someone in high places. The reasons to keep this code enforced have not changed. City codes help set the rules and standards by which we can live together safely and peacefully within a city. They encourage civic pride, which influences economic and community development. They exist for the good of all. City codes need to be enforced by the city. It should not be an arbitrary decision of an employee to decide which code should or should not be enforced. Just as a police officer cannot decide arbitrarily which laws he or she will enforce. If our agreed-upon codes are not enforced by the city, you are pitting neighbor against neighbor. Cloverdale residents who own an RV or trailer are a minority of the city residents. Rescinding the code supports the minority to the detriment of the majority, and that is not good governance. I and the residents of Elbridge Avenue and the cottages' development want to be part of the process of updating the RV code. We want to know the dates and times of any meetings and be included in this process. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to make a public comment on an item not on the agenda?
My name is Diane Bartelson. I live on University Street in Cloverdale. I'm here this evening because I believe there are compelling reasons that Cloverdale's current RV code be enforced, not ignored or eliminated. These reasons cited in a letter to each member of this council on April 8th are as follows. One, the current RV code keeps cars from being parked on city streets. Every illegal RV parked in a driveway blocks two residential parking spaces, one in a driveway and one in the owner's garage. Two, Cloverdale has 200-plus commercial rental RV spaces. Hypothetically, if this code is rescinded, the owners of these RVs could opt to park them in their driveways instead, thereby forcing 400 more cars onto our local streets and driveways. Three, parking RVs in driveways and streets creates safety issues. Not only do they block views for drivers, they impinge on the sidewalk, forcing pedestrians to walk out into the street to pass them. Additional cars parked on the street also obstruct the view of children who may be playing on or near the street, creating an increased safety risk to our young people. RVs, number four, RVs decrease curb appeal of homes and entire neighborhoods, thereby lowering property values and civic pride. Five, most Sonoma County incorporated cities maintain an RV parking code. Obviously, they feel there is a real need for such a code to exist and therefore choose to enforce their RV codes. Number six, and final, it is the responsibility of each resident who owns an RV to abide by the city code. An RV may be their home away from home, but that is no excuse for imposing these large eyesores on their neighbors on a daily basis. In conclusion, I hope you agree that RV owners need to be held responsible by the city for storing their RVs in one of the many affordable storage facilities available in our area. That's where RVs belong. Thank you for your consideration of my concerns on this important issue.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to make a public comment on an item that is not on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Under C Communications, the written communications sent to council since the last meeting, what we have listed is the RV code letter from Barbara who just spoke. Student liaison report, I didn't get one, Michael, did you? Okay.
I'm going to go back to the RV code letter. I mean, at a previous meeting, I think there was some direction that it go to a subcommittee meeting, so are there any recommendations from staff as to, you know, how this should be reviewed?
Through the mayor, if I can respond to that question, Councilmember Bagby. Again, I want to reference the letter that is included in your packet and thank Ms. LeBlanc for writing her correspondence. Out of transparency, we included it in the packet. I think in terms of going forward, the recommendation from council was to assign this matter for further discussion review by a council subcommittee. Based on this being a zoning matter, the staff's determination that it should be considered by the Planning and Sustainability Subcommittee, the next meeting, which is provided for in your packet, is, get the date real quick here, is Tuesday, April 16th. So that the agenda will be posted this Thursday. That will be a topic of discussion. Ultimately, because any amendments to the zoning code or even discussion of amendments typically are assigned to the Planning Commission for review. It will be my recommendation that this be a workshop item by our planning commission, but we will obviously formally discuss that at the Planning and Sustainability Subcommittee on Tuesday of next week. Again, the agenda will be posted this Thursday by our city clerk. And I did want to note for the record that the question here is in regards to Section 18.1106 of our zoning code, which is in regards to recreational vehicle parking. The language at hand does not state that RVs cannot be parked at residential properties. It says they may be parked, but are subject to the following, and that is screening is required for all RVs. The issue for staff is there's a reference to actually three different ordinances that were adopted in 2020, 2017, and 2015. Staff needs to do the necessary research and background to look at those ordinances that were adopted by council to help better shed light on the language and the understanding of what is entailed in the term screening as provided for in your zoning ordinance. So that will be discussed again more at the Planning and Sustainability Subcommittee and presumably, if assigned, to the Planning Commission for review.
I think that that sounds like the proper way to move forward. And just kind of, you know, taking a quick look at the ordinance language, it's definitely vague in a couple of places, so that I can see there's definitely an opportunity to clean that up. So I'm happy to kind of have a first listening at Planning and Sustainability, and I can anticipate it kind of needing to go to a public meeting, a larger public meeting at the Planning Commission. So yeah, that sounds like a good plan. Thank you, City Manager.
Moving on. E Proclamations. E1 is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Vice Mayor.
Proclamation of the City Council, the City of Cloverdale, recognizing April 14th through the 20th, 2024 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, whereas unforeseen events necessitating the intervention of emergency services such as police, fire, or medical teams can arise spontaneously, and whereas in the face of an emergency, the swift action of police personnel, fire department members, and emergency medical technicians is essential for safeguarding lives and securing property. And whereas the well-being of our law enforcement and fire services units relies on precise and timely relay of information received from callers to the Cloverdale Emergency Communications Hub. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators form the first point of contact for our residents during the times of crisis, providing to be an indispensable resource in accessing emergency assistance. Whereas public safety telecommunicators provide a crucial connection to our police and fire personnel, keeping a vigilant watch over their radio activities, rendering vital information, and affirming their well-being. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators of Cloverdale have made significant contributions towards the capture of law offenders, the mitigation of fire outbreaks, and the provision of patient care. And whereas over the past year, our dispatchers have demonstrated commendable empathy, patience, and professionalism in the execution of their duties. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Mayor Todd Lance of the City of Cloverdale does hereby declare April 14th through the 20th, 2024 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Cloverdale and commends our dedicated team of dispatchers: Tammy Lemley, Tanya Galloway, Carolyn Peterson, Lori Smith, Darlene Stratton, Dispatch Supervisor Kaitlin Jensen, and Records Manager Linda Webb, for their unwavering commitment to upholding the safety and security of our community, so ordered dated April 10th, 2024.
Thank you. Chief, want to say something?
My mic's out. Just some quick stats here for you. So our dispatchers last year took 1,091 calls and 19,553 calls for service. They do much more than just handle calls. They're the first person you meet at the front counter. They, most of you don't know, but they, when an officer writes a report, arrest report, they package that case up and send it off to the DA's office. And they do a much, a great job at that. I could never do that job, and I always tell them that because there's just so much going on in there. The dispatch for the local ambulance, the dispatch for Bell Services is their first port of call for the fire department. They dispatch for the police officers who are working the streets here in Cloverdale. They have a lot going on, and sometimes there's only one dispatcher in there, and, you know, staff always helps out. They're just a great resource for us, and I can't appreciate them enough. One week is not enough for me. I continue to appreciate them every day that I go in there and say hi and, what can I do for you? I treat all my employees like they're my customers, and, you know, they do a good job for the community. And, you know, our goal is to provide service, and that's what they do, provide an excellent service for us. So I appreciate them every single day. Thank you for their service.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else? Ellen? Anyone? Yeah, Chief, I'll echo what you said. Being former law enforcement, I know how much the dispatch means. They're the first person that takes the call, and they're the last one to hear an answer. So what the cops go out and deal with, the dispatches don't know what's going on, and so they're usually left hanging. And so there's a lot of emotions that go with that, mental anguish. And then turn around and try to be nice to the next person after a bad call, it's very difficult. So they're very much appreciated, and probably the strongest people within the department. So thank you. Is there anyone here, Chief? I don't, I don't see, okay. Well, no pictures, I guess. You can deliver. All right, we'll move on to E2, Week of the Young Child. Is there anyone that would like to read this tonight?
... of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, recognizing April 6th to April 12th, 2024, as Week of the Young Child in Cloverdale. Whereas the Childcare Planning Council of Sonoma County and other local organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 6th to 12th, 2024. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early care and education opportunities that provide a foundation of learning for all children in Cloverdale, California, and whereas high-quality early education, early care and education can help ameliorate the effects of poverty, detect and remediate delays, identity, and help prevent child neglect, and lead to positive outcomes for individual children, helping them be better prepared for school and more likely to succeed in life. And whereas young children need developmentally appropriate, accessible, and available early care and educational settings, and whereas young children need access to early childhood education workforce that reflects a rich diversity of linguistic, racial, and cultural identities, and whereas childcare providers who are skilled and valuable frontline professionals that risk their health to provide early care and education during a global pandemic deserve to be fairly compensated, and whereas early childhood education providers and other community members who make a difference in the lives of young children in Cloverdale deserve thanks and recognition. And now therefore be it proclaimed that Mayor Lance of the City of Cloverdale does hereby declare April 6th to 12th, 2024, as the Week of the Young Child in Cloverdale, and commits to investments that stabilize, sustain, and support childcare and early learning, so this essential workforce can continue to support children, families, and our economy through the pandemic crisis recovery and beyond, dated April 10, 2024, so ordered by Mayor Todd Lance.
Thank you. Anyone would like to say anything? Anyone on the side? Seeing none, we will move on to G, the Consent Calendar. All items under the Consent Calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any council member or a member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Would anyone like to pull any items? Would anyone in the public like to pull any items that are listed on our consent calendar? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Thank you. All right, moving on to H, Public Hearings. H1, the issuance of tax-exempt bonds by California Municipal Finance Authority for the Alexander Valley Apartments Affordable Housing Project. David or Kevin?
Mayor Council, Mayor Councilmembers, this item is a public hearing proposing the adoption of a resolution approving the issuance of the California Municipal of a resolution approving the issuance of the California Municipal Finance Authority exempt bond facilities for the Alexander Valley Apartments. The TEFFRA or the Tax Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing is required per IRS Code whenever these tax bonds or these tax exempt bonds are being issued. This is a procedural step. It doesn't obligate the city in any financial way. The council did approve the project back in February of two thousand twenty-two. Is my mic working?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, sorry. So it was it was approved in February of two thousand twenty-two. Since that, the applicant has been working diligently to get a building permit for the project, and they're probably about halfway there at this point. Adopting this resolution does help us implement our housing element. Implementation Measure P one one talks about the city assisting affordable housing projects in identifying and securing affordable housing financing. So I'm gonna, I know Anthony Stubbs is here from the California Municipal Finance Authority, and Lauren Alexander is online. She's been the project manager for this project the entire time. I'll leave it there. I don't know if you want to hear from Alex now or, you know, open it up.
No. Is Anthony online or is he in person?
Anthony's here.
Do you want to come forward and speak now? And or Alex, what do you want to do? It's, yeah, let's let them present real quick. It'd be great.
Hi, Anthony Stubbs with the California Municipal Finance Authority. Here for any questions, if there are any. He summed it up pretty well. This is a TEFFRA hearing, which is basically to inform the public that this project qualifies for tax-exempt financing, and, like he said, there will be no responsibility with the financial aspect of this with the city. This is all between the developer and the financer. But here for any questions.
Alex, do you have anything before I open up to the, anyone? Okay. Counsel? Anyone?
Hold on, miss.
Well, let me open it up to the public for a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make any public comments regarding this item on the agenda?
Thank you, Daniel Frankston. I'm here in support of adopting this resolution. When I was a student at Sonoma State, I took public administration, and I got to tell you, I really got wowed at the notion of home role and the idea that cities could determine for themselves how they wanted things to lay out and whatnot. When I got done with school and I got out in the real world, I realized it doesn't work that way. There are mandates that are placed on municipalities and counties that you're obligated to follow. And I know that it's frustrating for you as a city council that you're being told what to do by the state, and I can certainly sympathize with that one hundred percent. I own a dispensary. We're also regulated by the state. I've got to get a health permit, for which I pay more money than a cannabis dispensary license, so that the health department can verify that my edibles are six inches off the ground. So I feel your pain with regards to the mandates that shouldn't be there. My choice is to either pay it, walk away from the dispensary, or fight for change. And I would urge each and every one of you to fight for the change that you want to see with the state and become more involved in doing that. But we're not here about mandates, and we're not here about affordable housing. What we're here about is the issuance of tax-free bonds, and what we're really here about is fiscal responsibility to the tune of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Because if you don't adopt this resolution, the county will step forward, they will adopt the resolution, and they will get the money. I'm all for taking principled stances, but when it comes to my business and my customers, I have to do what's in the best interest of them, and so too as council members. I appreciate your principles, but bottom line is, you need to do what's best for the City of Cloverdale. There have been many complaints about a lack of affordable housing in the area. Section eight waiting lists, et cetera, are ridiculous. This project will help to start alleviate that problem. There's a motel right across the street from my dispensary. They pay zero dollars, as far as I know, in TOT tax. This project being built will allow for affordable housing at another location that hopefully someday will allow for the motel to start collecting TOT taxes. I know that there's a bond measure that's going to be before the council either later this month or next month, the issuance of, the idea of putting a bond measure on the ballot to raise taxes, sales tax, and property taxes to help pay for needed repairs. It's hard to ask for citizens to shell out more money for sales tax and property tax if the city is willing to walk away from essentially twelve thousand five hundred dollars. I realize that twelve thousand five hundred dollars will not solve all of the city's fiscal problems, but it's a start in that direction. And at a minimum, that money should be placed. My understanding is that it's put in the general fund, and I would urge you to take those funds and put it towards development of the Asti Road planning in the future or improvements for the projects that's going to be there. Again, I request and urge you to adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw you stand up. Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lance, Vice Mayor Wheeler, council members and staff. My name is Omar Lopez, and I'm the Program Associate at Generation Housing. I'm here on behalf of the Generation Housing team to reaffirm our unwavering support of the Alexander Valley Apartments development. This project represents a beacon of hope for affordable housing in this community, and today we greatly urge you to support for issuing, greatly urge you for your support in issuing the tax-exempt bonds necessary for bringing this vision to life. Approving these bonds is not merely a procedural step, it is a profound opportunity for Cloverdale's leadership, which is you, to unequivocally demonstrate that housing is a top priority for the city. We recognize that alternative pathways exist for securing these bonds, and forcing these pathways would be a missed opportunity for Cloverdale to lead on housing and potentially embroil the city in unnecessary legal conflicts with the state of California, something that we must diligently avoid. The critical need for affordable housing in Cloverdale cannot be overstated. The Alexander Valley Apartment Development promises not only to alleviate this pressing demand, but also to serve as a model for sustainable, community-focused development. By voting in favor of these tax-exempt bonds, you are voting for the future of Cloverdale, a future where everyone can have access to affordable, quality housing. Let's seize this opportunity to make a decisive impact. Let's show the community and indeed the state that Cloverdale is committed to solving the housing deficit with bold actions and clear priorities. Your support for this bond issuance will pave the way for a brighter, more inclusive future for all of Cloverdale's residents. Thank you for your service, and we look forward to your leadership on this issue.
Anyone else that would like to make public comments on this?
My name is Molly Fisher, and I've lived in Cloverdale since two thousand and three. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. I'm here to urge you to proceed with planning the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing for the Alexander Valley Apartments. I've always been in favor of moving forward with this apartment building. Housing for agricultural workers and their families is vital in our community. I live around the corner from the thirty-seven-unit Cloverdale Family Apartments by Washington School. It's a lovely place, and my neighbors there are great. I have no reason to doubt that the Alexander Valley Apartments will be just as nice, with the dog park, the rail bikes, and the possible future railroad museum. I believe this part of Cloverdale will become part of daily life for more and more of us, and naturally for our new neighbors in the Alexander Valley Apartments. The unprecedented action of denying the TEFFRA hearing is not a cost-effective way to send a message to the state of California. Please don't create an expensive and useless legal battle with the state of California over this hearing, after all the work you've done getting to this step. There are organizations such as Our Neighborhood Voices, working to draft a state of California ballot initiative to roll back some of California's so-called anti-NIMBY laws. If you want change at the state level, getting involved as individual voters may be a better way to do it. Congratulations to you and to our Planning Commission on getting to the funding step of this project. It's been a lot of work, and I commend you for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to first make clear that this development doesn't affect my property. It's down the road. It's not even in my sight. I don't see it. But this housing project is one of the worst locations I can think of. The amount of traffic, without traffic controls, is very dangerous. People travel at speeds up to eighty miles an hour on Asti Road with lack of police enforcement. The location is segregated from simple grocery shopping and public transportation. There's no sidewalks, there's no lighting. Who's going to pay for all that? Are they going to get bonds for that, or is Cloverdale City going to have to pay for that? Our city can't even fix the roads in the current neighborhoods that have serious potholes and damage. The response from the city is, there's no money for that. So where's the money coming from to build out Asti? What about parking? At the last meetings, you all said that there was going to be no parking on Asti Road. Look how that worked out for Iole Ranch. That's a disaster. The lumberyards have delivery trucks coming in all night long, all hours of the night, twenty-four seven, and they're big rigs. These are fully loaded. They are not just little delivery vans. They operate until late in the night. The gates are usually open and easily accessible for children to wander in there and get hit by a truck. What about the river access, the fire road back there? The dangers of children wandering off down the fire road to the river, drowning or being attacked by homeless that live down there? There's no enforcement to get rid of the homeless, so I guess you got to accept them. We hear constant screaming, yelling, and gunshots on the river all the time. And I want to echo what Todd said. I too saw the article that Melanie Bagby was in, The Press Democrat, and speaking of equity and financial prosperity regarding the Huron overpass in Santa Rosa. The city is having a big discussion about the Huron overpass segregating the lower-income neighborhoods from the other neighborhoods. They're saying that the freeways and the train racks, train tracks divide the lower income from the rest. Well, I hate to tell you, you got both. You're putting the housing on the low-income ag workers on the wrong side of the tracks and the wrong side of the freeway. You should be ashamed of yourselves for allowing segregation of struggling humans, the class of humans. You say we are all anti-affordable housing, the developer and the project managers. I ask those of you to correct yourselves in those statements. We, your quotes were, we're afraid of change and fear of low-income solutions near them, and that were racist. Correct your ignorant statements. This is coming from myself and my husband, who is a minority. We once lived in subsidized housing. We were low-income, and we did struggle, something I'm sure none of you went through in your privileged lives. Something I can say for sure is that we didn't have the opportunity to go to Rincon Valley, Christian. We lived in the ghetto of Santa Rosa. I lived in Indian Village, Sebastopol Road. My husband grew up in South Park and West Ninth. I can speak on these things because I lived it. Nobody is afraid of change. What's unacceptable is certain people only want housing for ag workers, but they just represented that this was going to be for everyone. It is not for everyone. This is only for ag workers. So look for bonds that will support everybody in our community. The rest of our community is struggling. Again, you should all be ashamed of yourselves for segregating the struggling class of humans. Housing doesn't have a face or a color. It should be for everyone. We should be working to build Cloverdale as a whole and come together to help the next person and the next generation. You don't need a tax exemption. You should pay like everybody else has to pay. Isn't the city helping enough by being forced to develop that area because you're refusing?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer, and I'm here tonight to express my concerns about the Alexander Valley Apartments. I urge the council to take a comprehensive approach to the community engagement regarding the Alexander Valley Apartments project, particularly in light of the critical issue of affordable housing in California and its relevance to Cloverdale. I acknowledge the necessity of affordable housing and recognize the importance of the project, and it's essential to address the flaws in its design that directly impact our neighborhood and our community. Many of us residents living in proximity to this project have repeatedly expressed our concerns to the council. However, these concerns have not been adequately addressed, and there is a growing sense of frustration among community members who feel unheard. I agree that this project is, should happen, it's going to happen, but I don't feel like they need a tax exemption. In previous meetings when we've expressed concern to the council, there was no money for infrastructure. There was no money for streetlights, sidewalks, to have more police presence. I mean, I live there. I call the police probably five times a week because there is extreme, all kinds of issues. There's gunshots, there's homelessness, there's fighting, there's speeding, there's, somebody wrecked in front of my house last night because they were speeding, right? And I just want there to be some improvement in the infrastructure, and I want to know who's paying for that, because these are critical things. And so I disagree that they don't need to have a tax exemption, and for all the reasons I've been at meetings many times addressing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Reese Foxen, and I live here in Cloverdale. I know exactly what it's like to be homeless. I've been homeless, and I know what that's like. We absolutely need to move forward with this affordable housing, and part of that move is taking financial steps and responsibilities that we need to take. Mandates are put in place so procedures and pathways are clear for everybody, and public hearings are to be held so the community knows what's going on. I think all of you understand this. So this, tonight, was necessary, absolutely, not for the twelve thousand dollars, but because the public needs to hear it. I, I just can't imagine that you wouldn't move forward and take responsibility like you're supposed to. That's what you're in place for. Thank you.
My name is Vikai Udo. I think there is some confusion about what your decision and what your roles are going to be here tonight. The decision is not about approving the development. That was done two years ago by a vote of three to one. Mayor Lance abstained, Mr. Walter voted against it. So this is not, should not be a meeting to rehash the feasibility of the proposal. It has been approved. It was approved. This is strictly, should be, a perfunctory discussion about the financing. The representative from the entity that provides the bonds, I saw the Finance Committee meeting, said ninety-nine point nine percent, and I'm probably wrong, exaggerating. This is, these are perfunctory hearings. It just is a requirement of the state to make sure the public understands about the financing. The city's under no financial obligation regarding this. In fact, if the city doesn't say yes to this, they lose twelve thousand five hundred dollars, which could go to the City of Santa Rosa or to the county if the Board of Supervisors take this up. So the point is, this is not a rehash of the proposal. That has been decided. The council already said yes. So given that, this, the vote should be a yes for the financing, unless the council members as a majority, if the majority votes against it, wants to lose twelve thousand five hundred dollars. So, and just exacerbate and delay this project further. It's been approved. It was voted upon. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know some of you know me. I'm Zee Guzman. I'm the founder of La Familia Sana, and also very, very involved in my community. I just want to share that housing- I just want to share that housing is a very big issue. Affordable housing is a very big issue. Four weeks ago, I attended a webinar that was put on by Harvard University. And I have this study here, and David, I'll be happy to share it with you, that 50% of the renters throughout the country cannot afford their rents anymore. The North Bay, including Sonoma County and Marin County, are among the worst. 57% of renters cannot afford the rent. So if we talk about the need for affordable housing, it's much greater, and the problem is getting greater. And it's throughout the country, but in our area, Sonoma County, they say 57% of renters can't afford the rent in the general population. But if you look at your low-income wage earners from hospitality, service industry, and agriculture, you're probably looking at about a closer 80% of people not being able to afford their rents. The need is great. I would really like to share this report, and I'll send it to David since I still got your email. I'll send this report to David. Please read it. It really talks about our responsibilities as city officials, county officials, and state officials to deal with this enormous housing problem. It's big, and it's not easy, and it's going to be tough, and there's going to be a lot of growing pains, but we need to do this. I really urge that you support and allow this project to move forward as expeditiously as possible, because, you know, I've been involved in a big project here in Sonoma County recently, and I'm seeing the rise of homeless farmworkers, homeless service workers. And you know what? We need them. And I urge you to please help move this project forward. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone in the audience?
Thank you. My name is David Holt. I live in Cloverdale. And I've been watching this project for a couple of years now. I concur with the previous speaker. This is simply a matter of acknowledging the financing. The city of Cloverdale's zoning code, the zoning TOD for the area, was all set by the city of Cloverdale, by the citizens here. If this were a state issue, maybe there should have been some discussion on our consent calendar item G2, which I think edited some zoning issues that are state-mandated. And I didn't see any discussion. I didn't hear anything. So I don't think it's really true that this is a state issue being forced down our throat. We're citizens here. We've enacted our zoning. It's been approved by our board, our previous boards, our planning commissions. So please, keep it straight and truthful. This is about a state-mandated hearing for the tax-free exempt bonds. No discussion of any of the other items on what was previously discussed about the planning and the placement. It's all done. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And the consent calendar item, we discussed it at a last meeting. I would recommend watching our last meetings so you can hear the discussions that we had and the debate regarding the zoning. That's where that came from, so it's already been through. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, we're going to back up the dice. Alex, do you have anything that you wanted to add at this point? Okay. Let's go around. Anything? Anything?
No, I just have a quick comment. You know, this item, it's a public hearing item with very narrow scope. But one thing that we do have control over is how that $12,500 is going to be spent out of our general fund. And I think when we're ready to move the item, I'd like to include some additional instruction to staff, and we can have further discussion at the budget workshop. But I'd like to earmark that $12,500 for the planning phase of Asti Road and First Street pedestrian and bicycle improvements. And I'd be happy to make a motion if we've concluded our deliberations.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I just want to clarify. I did vote against this project a couple of years ago, and not because I'm not in favor of affordable housing or low-to-modern-income housing, because of the location, because of the fact that the city had no say in this matter. And I'm going to request through the mayor that maybe the city attorney can clarify exactly what the position of the city is. And I totally understand that tonight is the financing package. And if we don't approve it, I'm under the impression that we could be sued by the state for trying to delay this project. It's not the right location. Angela, you're absolutely right. Everything that you said, everybody is right. We do need affordable housing. But it's got to be the right affordable housing in the right location. And this isn't it. Unfortunately, it's mandated by the state that we do it. So that's my feelings on it. Thank you.
Yeah. Excuse me. And through the mayor, just to respond, council member, you know, as background, you know, when this project came before the council two years ago, we really were, at that time, had the obligation to approve it because it both complied with our zoning and/or used density bonuses to excuse performance with our zoning requirements. We really had a pretty clear obligation that we had to approve it or certainly would have seen in that situation enforcement and probably a lawsuit. Here, the laws are not, you know, black and white, explicit like they were in that case, but the general laws are sort of limiting our ability to say no here. You know, if we were to deny it, you know, it's possible the Attorney General, HCD, might bring a lawsuit saying we're violating our fair housing obligations or violating the commitments we made in our housing element. In the housing element, we counted these units for this project as units that were in the pipeline to meet our RENA obligation. And so if this project were to die, we'd probably have to go back and rezone some other site and upzone some other sites so it could accommodate this type of units. So, you know, if we were to get sued by the state, you know, there are arguments we might have, but certainly that would be a costly endeavor to fight with the state. And just council member Bagby, I would note that it's not agenda-wise tonight to really talk about that, how that money would be spent, but that staff can certainly note that. And if that's something that council wants to do at the budget workshop or later on when it's part of the budget items, that would be an appropriate time to raise that at that time.
Question to staff.
Great. And Alex, thank you. Because the reason that there was a lot of rumors and pushback is because we didn't understand the whole process, and we wanted to ask questions to our attorney, who is a real estate expert. So all of the, I don't know, I'll call it the hubbub that was out there on social media, it was a big nothing, because we were on board. We understand what we're doing. This isn't the first time, but we didn't understand the Tefra. And what we wanted to do is try to make sure that we were doing what was best for Cloverdale. So I'll leave it at that. There's a lot more that I had to say due to what was going on, but I will leave it at that. So if we have a motion at this point... Oh, there was a question that I think I should respond to. People said that I had recused myself at the beginning of this. It was because of the threat of the lawsuit that they had pointed at me at the last second regarding the HCD and Attorney General Bonta just for questioning items on this project when it was first brought to us. And I didn't want it to muddy the waters, and so I just recused myself on the vote. So I have every right to vote, and I didn't have to recuse myself at that time. So I will continue to vote here. Is there anyone that would like to say anything else? And do we have a motion?
Thank you.
Second.
Perfect. We'll call when you're ready.
Councilmember Bagby? Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you. Anthony, thank you for being... Anthony, I do have one question that I apologize. I should have asked it before we did the vote, but I don't think it makes a difference. With the process of the money, when do you find out who lives in these places? You know what I mean? Like, it's not directed at farmworkers currently right now, right? It's as the process comes, that's when you decide what the money is for the housing, correct? That part's not decided till the end, as I understand it. I want to see if you can clarify that.
Just to clarify, what aspect of the money...
So when the affordable apartments are completed, there's different grants and monies that is issued, and it has earmarks for who it's for. When is that decided? Is that now? Like, is it specifically farmworker right now? Or as I understood, that's like the last thing that goes through the development?
Yeah. So the financing that we're talking about right now, the tax-exempt financing, does not specify any specific group. It's just for the affordability.
And that's what I wanted to make clear, because there was a lot of talk about being for farmworker. And I want to make sure that people understand that it's not directed at that yet.
There's other financing involved in the project, and I believe they were getting Joe Cernick money for farmworkers.
Absolutely.
So there will be some units set aside for that. But what we're talking about tonight is just restricted on affordability, nothing else.
I just didn't want bad information getting out.
Yeah.
And I appreciate that.
Gotcha.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to I, new business. I1, Ordinance Repealing and Replacing Cloverdale Municipal Code, Chapter 5.36, Rent Control in Mobile Home Parks, to adopt new rent control regulations for mobile home parks.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, members of the community. Tonight, you're going to hear a presentation by our city attorney, Alex Mog. The item before you tonight is an ordinance that would repeal and replace the existing municipal code, Chapter 5.36, which provides for rent control for mobile home parks. Given concerns about the existing municipal code language that provides for rent control, direction from council was to refer this to a council subcommittee for review. Council subcommittee reviewed and deliberated on draft policy points for an ordinance, and those policy points are reflected in the draft ordinance that's being introduced tonight. Our city attorney, Mr. Mog, is going to walk us through a presentation providing an overview of the key policy points of the ordinance. So with that, I'll turn it over to the city attorney Mog.
Thank you, David, and good evening again, Mayor, council members. So what is on the table tonight, like Mike said, is an ordinance to repeal and replace our current municipal code, Chapter 5.36, which deals with rent control in mobile home parks. Mike, if you can go to that next slide, please. I'll run through these slides quickly because they're just background and the council has seen these slides before. But the current ordinance, current municipal code establishes a rent control scheme. It says basically that you can't have any rent increase in a mobile home park without going to this board. It appears, staff did a lot of research. Our files don't go back well all the way to 1986, but they go back pretty good, at least to 2020. Doesn't seem like this ordinance was ever implemented, not clear why. But many of the elements of the current ordinance are out of date. Some of them are unconstitutional. And certainly, if we did it in that manner, it'd be a huge administrative burden on the city. So like David mentioned, there was direction to take this to a subcommittee. Subcommittee reviewed, provided some comments, and went to the city council. City council provided direction for the subcommittee to do a further discussion about this. And there was a subcommittee meeting over at the fire station where representatives of park owners and residents were there, providing some feedback. And the subcommittee gave direction on the ordinance. Next slide, please. So rent control is legal. It's a proper exercise of the city's police power, and it's well-established that rent control is legal. But rent control has to provide a mechanism for ensuring landlords receive a fair return, a just and reasonable return. So that's why you see and we'll talk about a process that landlords, or in this case, park owners can take advantage of if they're not receiving a fair return under the sort of default rent increase process. Next slide, please. So as I'm sure the council is aware, mobile homes are very different than traditional residential homes. For one, they're not really mobile, even though we call them mobile homes. But the other thing is, in general, the mobile home resident owns the mobile home but rents the space. And so the rent you're paying is to occupy the space, not to occupy the unit itself. We have three parks within the city with about 183 spaces total between the three of them. So, next slide, please. So the proposed ordinance is very similar to the ordinance that the county has and many other cities use. The details are a little different based on the direction it's been received, but overall, the structure is very similar. That will hopefully allow, you know, the greatest ease of understanding by park owners and residents and, you know, legal aid providers and also city, you know, as we go to implement this. The details were based on direction from the subcommittee, but of course, the decision is up to the council to make. You know, it's scheduled tonight, this meeting, for an introduction and first reading. If the council wants to make changes, some of those changes we can probably make on the fly tonight and incorporate into a motion. If there's more detailed changes, we probably have to continue this item until the next meeting to come up with that text. Next slide. So we're not going to talk about every little detail of the ordinance. It's long because it necessarily has to provide a lot of definitions and, you know, detailed procedures on days and that sort of thing. But a couple of main points to bring up tonight. There is... So under a rent control ordinance, you're allowed automatically, a park owner, to do a maximum increase every year. Of course, you can do less than the maximum as a park owner, but what rent control ordinance does is it sets a cap. What the proposed cap is in the draft ordinance is 3% increase or 70% of CPI, whichever is greater. So for example, if CPI is 2%, 70% of that would be 1.4%. 3% is greater than 1.4%, so a 3% increase would be allowed. If CPI is 6%, 70% of 6% is 4.2%. 4.2% is greater than 3%, so in that case, 4.2% would be allowed. And this is based... There's a lot of different ways to measure CPI. We use the measurement for the Bay Area for all urban consumers, and then the annual change from December to December. That was chosen just because then that information's available at the beginning of the year in January, and park owners can decide, you know, when throughout the year to implement that increase. It would probably be different for different residents. We also have to decide what the base rent is. If we're saying, you know, you can increase your space rent by 3%, 3% over what? So what the ordinance says is that, you know, for existing residents who are occupying their spaces as of January 1 of this year, that is what the space rent is. That means if, when this ordinance goes into effect, if someone's space rent has been increased by more than what's allowed under this ordinance in between January and now, a park would be required to lower that down to whatever is allowed. They would not have to give a refund for what has been collected because that was, you know, at the time, a legal rent, and so there's no refunds. But going forward, that rent would have to be decreased. Next slide, please, Mike. So just allowed rent increase, two other things to touch on. The ordinance does exempt long-term leases. So that would be a lease of over 1 year. So, that would be a lease of over one year in length. A resident who signs that can decide to agree to, you know, a different rent schedule. So, you know, someone might, you know, a tenant might like the knowing, you know, I'm going to get a 3% rent increase every year, rather than some years it might be 2%, some years it might be 4%. So, that's something that the parties can voluntarily agree to. We do require—this is similar, you see in other ordinances, and when this was—this used to be part of state law, but is getting phased out. One of the requirements to ensure that it is voluntary, that the ordinance includes, is a requirement that the park owner provides some notice about this ordinance at the time that a lease is—a lease is signed, a long-term lease, or a short-term lease, just so we know that, you know, that the resident knows about this ordinance and its protection, so that we can be confident when they sign this long-term lease, they're doing so knowingly and voluntarily. And then, the other thing is that the ordinance provides that a park owner can raise the rent by, you know, by any amount, whenever a new resident comes on and occupies a space, regardless of the circumstances. So, this is sometimes called vacancy control, or in-place transfer, they refer to slightly different things. So, but, regardless of when a new person occupies a rent—so, if a mobile home is pulled off, and a new person comes on with a new mobile home, which is generally thought of as vacancy control, our ordinance said you can—the park owner can raise it to any amount. If a mobile home is—stays in place, but is sold to a new resident, and that new resident moves in, the park owner can raise that rent to whatever they want at that process. Next slide, please. So, special rent increases, we, you know, mentioned that park owners have a right to fair return. Park owners also sometimes have costs, you know, a new, you know, the road at some point. You know, you might take care of it and maintain it, but there's a lifespan on a road. So, there's a process for park owners to request a rent increase above the allowable maximum. When they do that, they have to provide notice both to the city, just so we have sort of a record, and people will—I'm sure will come to us to ask for things, and also to all of the residents. And the ordinance, very similar to Sonoma County's, ordinance requires certain information about, you know, the rent increases, and the reasons behind it, and the finances supporting it to be provided. There's then a mandatory meet and confer process with the residents and the park owners. In the ideal world, hopefully, there's a resolution at that step, or everyone's satisfied. If not, residents may petition for an arbitration, and they'd need to get buy-in from 50% plus one of the park, so, you know, each space being one vote. But, the ordinance, again, similar to Sonoma County's, says that arbitration is mandatory whenever the increase proposed is very high, so whenever it's above 300% of the CPI. The arbitrator will review the requests, will review the financial information. The ordinance specifies other things they should be taking into consideration, comparing it to other parks, comparing, you know, the changes in expenses over time, that sort of thing, and determine whether a rent increase is appropriate, you know, for example, in order to provide that fair return. The decision of the arbitrator is final and binding, it can't be appealed to the city council. Next slide, please, Mike. So, the rent review process, most jurisdictions in Sonoma County rely on the Community Development Commission to carry out that review process, to be the recipient of notices, and to, you know, appoint a mediator, if necessary, for that mediation requested, and then to appoint the arbitrator. We have reached out to the Community Development Commission, and the—I would say the responses haven't been—there's been a little bit of nonresponsiveness, and also a concern that the council expressed previously is, well, will these hearings be able to happen in Cloverdale? Are we going to have to go down—residents and park owners have to go down to Sonoma, to Santa Rosa, to attend those hearings? So, we drafted this ordinance a bit broader. The city manager is designated as the administrator of this, and the city manager has the authority to appoint the arbitrator. And the ordinance says it needs to be someone who's neutral and qualified, so it describes, you know, someone who's served as a, you know, CPA, or an attorney, who's served as a sort of hearing officer in other contexts. And there are people who do this around. And it does—the ordinance, just, you know, to avoid any confusion, does say that could be someone from CDC, so if, you know, circumstances are right, and we get an agreement with them in place, you know, that could be who the city manager appoints. Next slide, please. So, there aren't no plans for sort of proactive administration of this ordinance. In bigger cities, you might see huge sort of rent review entities that are, you know, have a lot of staffing, that's not planned here. You know, which is similar to many of our ordinances, where, you know, we might adopt rules, but they're not necessarily, you know, enforced by the city. It's left up to individual property owners to enforce them, or, you know, tenants to enforce them. There will be some initial implementation by the city, you know, maybe putting together a notice to send all the residents, maybe a short FAQ, but other than that, wouldn't, you know, unless directed otherwise by the council, we wouldn't plan on doing any sort of extensive administration that would incur a big cost. The ordinance does allow the city council to adopt a fee, so if, in the future, we decide that we want to, you know, be more expansive in our role, you know, we could adopt a fee to pay for those costs. I will say, under state law, those administrative fees are—we have to allow park owners to pass on 50% of that to their residents, and so that's something to consider. And then, the ordinance also allows the city to establish fee for park owners seeking special rent increase, so if they're going to go through that process of seeking, you know, a special rent increase, an arbitration, we are authorized to establish a fee, and what our plan is, is include that in the master fee schedule for next year, so in a couple of months, it'll be included, and probably what it will be is a deposit that gets charged against, so that, you know, easy cases, it won't cost very much. And then, this will be an expense that they incur, and so that's an expense that, you know, during a fair return hearing, you know, will be incorporated, and it's possible through that process, you know, might get passed along to the residents, as, you know, it's evaluated whether a park owner is needing a fair return, obtaining a fair return or not. Next slide, please. So, the recommendation, based on the direction received from the subcommittee, is to introduce and read by—have a first reading by title only of an ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 5.36. Happy to, of course, take any questions from the council on any of the items we talked about tonight, or anything else of interest in the ordinance.
Great, thank you, Alex. Very, very clear. Would like to go first.
Mayor, members of the council, if I can, just a quick comment and resource for the council to consider, if it may be helpful, is included in the gender report is a table or chart showing the allowable rent increases by the other Sonoma County jurisdictions that have adopted rent control. I think the only city that's missing on the list is Healsburg, if I'm correct. But, I just point to that, because it might be a useful reference for your deliberations tonight, if you seek to understand what other cities have implemented in terms of their specific rent increase caps, because there's a lot of similarities, but there's also some variations.
And Michael, if you get a chance, could you put that table up on the screens, so we can all see it?
And just one caveat about the table, you know, this was what was included in the Sonoma Counties, when they, back in October, I think, considered changes to their ordinance, so it's possible, you know, there may have been changes since then from some of these cities, but this was taken from that staff report.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone up here that would like to make comments first? I think none. I'll open it up to the audience. Is there anyone in our audience that would like to make a public comment?
Enactment of a mobile home rent ordinance is probably one of the most important things that you can do, and most impactful on our community. There is an affordable housing crisis in Cloverdale and Sonoma, and much of this country. I don't know if you had an opportunity to see the letter, that I think it's in your package, from Legal Aid, that was written, and the statistics in there very much parrot what I believe Zeke mentioned earlier, that 80% of moderate—80% of low-income residents have moderate or severe housing burdens. And there are 300, more than 300 residents, park residents, here in Cloverdale. Most of them are poor, most of them are elderly, most of them are Hispanic, and most of them are living on fixed incomes. We need rent control to protect these people. I really want to commend the city attorney on his presentation. I think it was very clear, and I just really think he did a great job on it. You mentioned that there were some items that could be amended by voice, and you mentioned some items that could be amended that would require additional work. I'm going to request both. With regards to the 370% CPI, the recommendation from the subcommittee was that it be the greater of the two. I included a letter, which is in your packet, that shows that that would more than double the rent increase. Councilman Walter, I know that at the subcommittee, when this matter first came up, you indicated that—I'm sorry, I'm going to skip that for now, that's on vacancy control. And I really think it's important that it be the lesser of the two. It really—it's the difference between a strong rent ordinance and one that basically is hardly worth a paper it's written on. Vacancy control is very complicated, because there's really four different issues. There is the true vacancy, where a unit is actually up and moved. And, Mr. Mayor, you had indicated that they need to recoup some money, because they're going to have to do work with regards to that. My request of the council is that there be no vacancy, there be no controls when a space becomes vacant whatsoever. For that very reason, it'd allow them to do that. But, there are three other items that fall under vacancy control, but they're not really. Either A, whether there's a transfer between family members, somebody may die and the spouse takes over; B is when there's a sale, a typical in-place transfer; and C is when there's an eviction. And with regards to those, I think it's really important that there be a vacancy control. If you look at the—I didn't see the table, but if you look at my letter, there's a table that shows all the vacancy controls for all the counties. And basically, you have 5% seems to be the norm. There are certain jurisdictions where they don't allow any increase for in-place transfer. 5% would be an appropriate amount. If you combine the 5% for evictions, for in-place transfers, couple that with no vacancy control, I think you really have a perfect mix, where you provide the protection that the tenants need and the residents need, while still affording the owners the opportunity to get a fair return, without having to go in for a petition on an ongoing basis, because that's a costly and burdensome event for them to undertake, and it also burdens the city, because they have to go through the expense of having hearings heard. So, those are the two major components for rent control that I would urge. But, there's one more matter that I really think is important, and that's that any notices of rent increases be sent to the city clerk. It wouldn't cost a dime to do that, the information could be gathered. I know that the city attorney had mentioned a service, I believe it was 3DI, for rent registry, and I believe the cost of that was very comparable to what the city would perceive based on the last agenda item. But, I don't think that's necessary at this point, that's certainly something that could be considered down the road. If the information were gathered by the city, they could have it, and the purpose of it would be twofold, to ensure compliance, but it would also serve a good function for the city, because they could really see how the housing is allocated, and it would also, as was indicated at the subcommittee, it would provide assistance for fire and evacuation. It's important to know who resides in those mobile homes, there's over 300, and that would also assist in that. So, I would urge you to pass a strong rent ordinance. If people are not living in the mobile homes, they're going to be living across the road on River Road in RVs, and if they're not living there, they're going to be homeless. This is the last stop for a lot of people, and I really urge and encourage you to make those changes to the amendments, to the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Don't hit that yet. So, today—
Can you move your microphone down, please, so we can hear you? Thank you.
You won't—some of you won't see me, but that's okay. You know my voice. Today, I'm addressing your humanity. As a former council member and co-founder of La Familia Sana, I studied numbers and legal decisions. I questioned local unchallenged practices. I appealed to the city manager to assist me in addressing issues of the trailer parks. There was no initiative on his part to investigate my concerns about mobile home park standards. I appreciated the supervisors' response, James Gore and Senator Mike McGuire, but I was always referred to Sacramento, to the Department of Housing and Community Development. Basically, I was not supported on my efforts to advocate on behalf of Cloverdale Trailer Parks residents, and nobody in council. Or in administration was concerned about disproportionate rental increases because they're private properties. I have visited all three trailer parks within Cloverdale city limits. I am particularly familiar with the worst-kept trailer park on Railroad Avenue. Yes, trash overflowing, holes on the pathways, flooded streets, unkept sewer connections and sewage spills, limited water access since there is one connection, and the trailer park controls that. There are trailers, as well as hauling campers and recreational vehicles. I know of residents paying over $1,000 of rent as of today, with no recourse, because trailer park residents are afraid, intimidated of repercussions by the park owner or administration. But, the majority in Cloverdale only sees the beautiful scenery. This agricultural community hosts two realities, that of one working poor, and that of professionals and retirees. The working poor keep up the agricultural community so highly esteemed in California and beyond. I am asking you today to visit the parks in the heat of summer and the wet winters. I ask you to look beyond your level of comfort and exercise empathy. The most vulnerable in our Cloverdale community do not have a reliable roof over their heads, or proper insurance in case of loss, appropriate or appropriate and timely health or dental care, transportation, or a retirement pension. In the pandemic, I was the only council member distributing meals in the trailer parks. I saw people of all walks of life and ethnicities, young and old, poor, cancer patients, my constituents at the time, my neighbors today. I can tell many stories, but that's not my objective here today. I need you to be judicious, and I'm asking to listen to your constituents. We are needing sound and just policy in Cloverdale. I am requesting that you think of the most vulnerable, those that cannot pay even 2% in increase. Go beyond voting yes or no on policy. Make this community one where everyone is seen as a valuable human. Respect the dignity of every individual. Tonight, I am appealing to your humanity, to your sense of justice. As elected officials, I trust— As elected officials, I trust that you will exercise your power in a just manner and in a spirit of the Christian values you so profess as you recite the Pledge of Allegiance every time you get to this stage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else next?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name is Saulolondoño, and I'm with WMA. I last spoke at this forum during the council's February 14 meeting. First, I'd like to thank the council for voting that night to include all the housing providers in those discussions. Thank you for doing that. Additionally, I'm here to remind you that the park owners and operators in the city of Cloverdale are doing their best to provide this community with affordable housing while navigating our challenging economic and bureaucratic conditions in California. As a passion in this room exemplified tonight, finding ways to maintain and expand affordable housing in California is a priority of every city. Cloverdale is fortunate to have mobile home park operators who are experienced and care so much about their communities. A rent control ordinance is costly and will only add to the difficulty of properly maintaining their infrastructure. For that reason, we will always recommend against restricting operators' abilities to properly manage their communities via rent control ordinance. With that said, if this council does see fit to vote in favor of an ordinance tonight, we urge you not to make any further changes to the staff recommendation. We commend the city leaders and their staff for their willingness to open the process to the public, including both the residents and the providers. The staff recommendation was made after careful and thoughtful consideration of the obstacles offered by both sides during the ad hoc committee of the finance subcommittee, I'm sorry, the ad hoc meeting of the finance subcommittee. We believe the recommendations do a good job of protecting the current residents while providing operators with the mechanisms necessary to properly maintain their parks into the foreseeable future. Owners and operators in Cloverdale are proud of their communities and look forward to continuing to maintain them and to provide the region with essential affordable housing. We have already, you have already received correspondence from these local park operators, and there are at least one of them here tonight. Please listen to their concerns. We urge you to either reject an ordinance or approve the staff recommendation without further changes. Let's keep these communities sustainable and maintained. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Well, my name is Rick Thomas, and I'm the manager and owner of Briarwood Park. Three days and 43 years ago, I became manager of Briarwood. And my father had become a part-owner and then full-owner in the '70s, early '70s. He became a partner, and then we took it over completely to finish it. The February 14 hearing that we, that I presented a short commentary, there was a draft ordinance that was before you. And this here is the file that my attorney sent me regarding that draft ordinance. After the joint meeting where I attended at the fire station, we met with residents and park owners and the city committee. Out of that came a new draft and a staff report, which is in this file folder. It's more than three pages, which I requested, the rent ordinance that you would present. But I was impressed at how it didn't contain the language that I was concerned about with the more pages were generated. Oftentimes, the more pages, the more words, the more opportunity there is for misunderstandings or tyranny that somebody could use with those words. I sent this material to my attorney. He had this much to say with the first draft, which you had the professor's help putting together, and he had nothing to say about this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Susano Sejera. Yo vengo a hablar de la comunidad.
Thank you.
I'm here to speak on behalf of the community.
Pues nosotros somos latinos. Nosotros no ganamos mucho. La mayoría trabaja en el campo. Algo otros trabajamos en el molino, que es el suamil.
Many of us are Latino. A lot of us work in the farms, and a lot of us others work at the molino.
Algo otros son personas ya retiradas, ancianos que vivimos en estas trailers.
Some of us are people that are elderly and retired that live in these trailers.
Y estamos agarrando estos aumentos. Entonces, me hace un poco injusto que es aumento, y nosotros no estamos ganando bastante como para pagar estos aumentos.
So some of us are getting these increases, and it seems a little bit unjust because we're not getting any of these increases either.
Yo les pido de favor que tomen en cuenta esto, que somos personas de bajos ingresos, y que se haga algo.
So I ask you, please, to take this into account because we're people that learned low wages, and for please to do something.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask everyone to please refrain from clapping at the end of, I know, I know, I appreciate it, we all do. Just please be respectful. Thank you.
I'm Reese Foxon again, less emotional this time. I have two particular things that I have concerns with in this new ordinance. 5.36.050, which is establishment of new rent after vacancy. Just and reasonable for one person is a profit. Just and reasonable for another person is survival. And I think limitations need to be put on what happens when somebody vacates so that both sides are considered in raising the rent or adjusting the rent. So I think limitations are definitely necessary in that. My other concern is 5.36.060, which are the allowed rent increases, and I think it needs to read less than rather than greater than for exactly the same reasons. We're back to survival, and as several other people have said, survival is important. I had a sister who lived in a mobile home, had to leave because of rent raises, not in this area, another area. My mother lived in a mobile home. She was dealing with rent raises, but she passed on, so that took care of that. There are a couple of other things. I think the language is important, giving Spanish interpretation of what is put out is important. And then it's fascinating that the review process, we're creating our own review process rather than using the Sonoma County Community Development, whatever that's called. Again, we're separating ourselves from the rest of the county, and we seem to be doing that more and more. When I first moved here, I think I've told you before, we were very separate from the rest of the county. People worked very, very hard to get us back into the county. And what I see happening, and this is another indication of it, is we're moving away. So we'll be isolated once again. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment? Absolutely, you go first. We'll bring, oh, one more. Is it regarding what was just said? Before you start, one second. Right. You want to ask Alex right now?
Just a clarification question, Alex. Councilmember Cruz mentioned that there was a trailer park with some deplorable conditions of living. And it's always been my understanding that we don't have any jurisdiction over that, that that's with DMV. Is, am I right on that assumption?
In general, yes. So the California Department of Housing and Community Development regulates the interior of parks. There are some cities who were sort of grandfathered in and may enforce that, those rules on their own, but basically, otherwise, all cities don't have that power, and it's with HCD. And if once it's with HCD, we can't get it back. Things that have to do with the exterior of the park, there may be some, you know, opportunity for the city's regulation, you know, if your units are set back right from the right-of-way or something like that. But issues interior, you know, what would normally be our building department handling, that's done by HCD instead.
Thank you, because I know the trailer park she's talking about, and she's absolutely right. You know, you go through the uncertain areas, and it's not exactly maintained the way I think it should be or most people do. So, but that's something I guess we could look at at a subcommittee meeting at some point.
I apologize, ma'am. Please go ahead.
That's totally right. So my name is Josiah Rodriguez, and I'm a board member of La Familia Sana. I am here to just express some of my thoughts around this. Mobile homes represent the most affordable forms of housing for people on modest incomes, especially seniors and people living on fixed incomes. More than half of mobile home residents are over 65 and low income. And I have seen family members and family of friends, same as what was expressed earlier, who could only afford to live in these types of housing. So I want to speak to three things. One, that annual allowable rent increases limit to 3% or 70% of CPI, whichever is less. I believe what was recommended has been discussed, so that ordinance to be drafted with annual limits of 3% or 70% of CPI, whichever is more. This is a big difference, and other cities use the lesser of those two numbers. Vacancy control. We need vacancy control for when the mobile home is transferred between family members, for in-place transfers, when the mobile homeowner sells it to a third party, and following an eviction. This just echoes what other folks have also expressed. And third, affordable housing is a point of concern all over this county and especially here in Cloverdale, especially when many of our families and seniors here are currently living in substandard housing. What will the impact be on a community that is already marginalized? Don't bump this back to a subcommittee. We want to see it discussed and passed today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Karim Sanchez. I'm a community organizer with the North Bay Organizing Project and Sonoma County Tenants Union. I get the honor and privilege to work with some of the mobile home park residents that are here today. And, you know, I'm here to show our support for a rent control measure for mobile home parks with the changes that folks have already commented before me. There's some folks who are here who are from a mobile home park that are right outside of the city limits and who are also impacted. I don't think that I have to repeat, but I will, that these are vulnerable communities. These are folks who are on fixed income, who have chronic illnesses, who, and have found some affordability in mobile home parks. And I know that there's this connotation about the folks who live in these mobile home parks that are often negative or antisocial, and I'm here to tell you that that's not the case, that these are vibrant communities, full of culture and full of people who love and care for one another. I've seen it myself when they come together and form tenant associations. And I want to encourage you all to set a precedent here for what should happen with mobile home parks so that the county can do the same and protect some of the folks in the unincorporated areas. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Stieg Christensen. I'm a citizen, resident of Cloverdale. Just a comment on what I would like to see that you actually, what is the driving force of your thinking when it comes to pricing and price increases? The statement here is that it's either going to be like 3% or 70% of the CPI. I would tell that that's the best guess. Interest rate, sorry, inflation has been between 0 and 9% in the last couple of years. So 3% is probably a best guess. And 70% is probably also somewhat arbitrary, but also a best guess. So if they approach this to do best guess, okay. I would say it's much better if you take the approach that you show fairness, fairness and care, because with a 3% or 70% approach, it's always in favor of the landlord. Because if you have the case that interest rate, so inflation goes down, you may end up with a case that rents can be increased by up to 3% in the current ordinance, but prices have dropped. So if you want to show that the thinking, the driving force of the thinking of the council is fairness, you'd have to have a solution that says if prices go up, you're allowed to increase; if prices go down, you have to decrease. All right? The best guess approach or the fairness approach? That's my point.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Earlier, I spoke on behalf of Generation Housing, and I do want to clarify, Generation Housing does not have a stance on this issue. I want to speak on behalf of myself and my mom. My mom moved to Cloverdale over a decade ago. She spent six years of her life between family and roommates and whatever housing she could find to save for a mobile home. That mobile home is her home. That mobile home is her future. That mobile home is the American, I just forgot the word, the, you guys know what I mean, for her. That is the achievement that she was able to accomplish here. It is important for her to be able to afford that home for her. She is going to hit retirement age in five years, and she's very aware of the fact that if she retires, she will not be able to afford to live here. It is important for us to maintain these affordable houses, affordable to our community members, for our newer community members, our older community members. So please, I implore you to take action on this and to protect our affordable mobile homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Venshwaab. I am the owner of the Seven Palms. And I think I've done a very good job of keeping the site very well. I've added a whole solar panel for having green and covering, making it nicer from the, from the road. What a lot of people don't understand is that the cost of managing and owning a property like this is getting staggering with what it costs to run it. In fact, I got a bid for, when I'm going to do some underground, excuse me, that wanted $400,000 to fix all the underground. And I just, this year, I spent about $40,000 just to trim the trees, and taxes have gone double to triple. And so I'm very proud of the fact that I take good care of it and that people live in a good, livable place. And I got a number of buildings rebuilt to make it a better place. And if you dig too deep, it'll be hard for me to keep that maintenance up that I've been doing for seven years. been doing for seven to 10 years, sorry. But just want to let you know that there is a lot of cost to keep things running and that people don't see, like the underground wires, when they go bad, that's going to be a big number. And the sewers, when that goes, and then on and on. Please take that in consideration. I think the offer or the procedure that you just mentioned, I think it's not perfect, but I think it's fair and I think it's better for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a public comment? All right. Seeing none, I will bring it back up to the dais. So if you don't mind, I don't ever do this, but I think I'd like to go first. And the reason being is I took part in this whole process to... Can you bring up the chart for me? So we went through a subcommittee meeting. We had all the trailer park owners. We had...Daniel Frankston was very instrumental. We had a lot of people in there to speak on everyone's behalf. And this is the chart that we are given that shows where every single town in Sonoma County is at. What we negotiated is lower than anyone else in this county. So I want to make sure people understand that we are working hard for the tenants. You are getting the lowest possible already, lower than anywhere else in this county, as to what we offered. Now, the one thing that we did different was saying the word greater, between 3% or 70% of CPI. Daniel Frankston sent us numbers, and I ran them both ways as well. And he was right. It will be a little bit better to go with the word less than, and I agreed with him. And I put that in your email when I replied to you, that I agreed with him, and I think that we should change the greater than to less than. What I see, though, and we have to be careful with this, and this is what happens, is there becomes a great... greater separation between market rate and where the trailer parks are at. And so it becomes drastic when we do the rent increases for in-place transfers. And so that's why we have to kind of leave it open so that the trailer park owners can actually have that ability to put money back in. So there's a give and a take. And we're negotiating for the lowest rent increases in the county right now, already agreed as to where we were at to bring back to this committee. So I just want to make that clear, that I agree with you on that word. So that's where I'm at.
I'd like to say that we definitely need to do the lesser rather than the greater for the rent increase. And I also want to say that I think vacancy control is super important, and I'd like to see that we discuss that and work on actually having some vacancy control. I also think that we need to have the mobile home parks send the city a copy of any rent increases so that we can look at those, see if there's patterns, see if people are actually listening to and paying attention and abiding by the ordinance. So I also think that if a family member, like suppose your father dies and the son moves into the place, I think when that... They shouldn't have to pay any increase on vacancy when it's a family transfer like that. So I'd say regarding to the other family transfers, meaning a vacant lot, you know, and then another mobile home's moved in, things like that, I would say 5% increase would be fair unless it's a family transfer and then... Or eviction. I think for eviction, it should be 0% so that nobody's getting evicted, so that the owner of the park could make a profit off of evicting people. So at the most, for any vacancy increase, I would say 5%. And I really appreciate everything that Daniel's done and said about this. I agree with everything he said. And I also really like the letter from Legal Aid and from the attorney there that specializes in housing stability, from Margaret Di Matteo. And I think that we really need to protect our people that own mobile homes, and we need to make it so it's affordable for them. And they are a fragile population, and we need to make it so they don't have to move somewhere else and move out of their mobile home. And it's, in the long run, I think it's going to be better for the city of Cloverdale because we'll have less homeless people, which costs society. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Who wants to go next? Ms. Bagby? Microphone's blinking.
Yeah, the least expensive way to house people is to keep them in their homes and provide security. So I would definitely, you know, support the 3% a year or 70% of CPI, whichever is less. I appreciate how Stig phrased it. It's the kind and it's the fair thing to do, and it's probably the right... That's usually the right public policy. Also, you know, I think that the council should prohibit rent increases for any evictions or in-place transfers and allow that 10% increase when a mobile home is vacant, just when it's vacated, which is rare. And that's actually something I learned, kind of diving into this a little bit more deeply and discussing it with Daniel. Those mobile homes tend to stay put once they're placed. This is going to protect the tenants. It's going to keep rents affordable. It's going to prevent unjust evictions, which I think is something we all want to accomplish. And it's going to allow the landlords to recover, so when they are preparing vacant lots. And I think that that's an important consideration. But most importantly, you know, I think that this brings us in line with what other cities in Sonoma counties are doing, and that consistency is actually important. That policy direction is important. And I think that the reason that the 3% and the 70% of CPI are lower is important because we are acknowledging that our average incomes are less than other cities. So I think that that's a fair adjustment, and that's what I'd like to see us adopt tonight. And then I do appreciate the direction to staff, which I think is completely appropriate on matters like this and other matters, is that we need to look at code enforcement and what our ability is to enforce at all of our mobile home parks and make sure that they are safe and healthy places for kids and families and for our seniors. And we need to understand where we have the power, the police power of enforcement, and where it ends and where HCDs begins.
Echo, Councilmember Maggie.
I'm sorry.
Sorry there.
Well, just one thing. You know, I think the subcommittee did an excellent job in bringing the framework back to the city council to tweak it. And I'm not saying that just because I was on the subcommittee, but it was really a good process. We had Rick Thompson there. We had all the owners of the trailer parks there, and we had some tenants as well. And I'm glad that we're coming to fruition on this, and I'll go along with the recommendations that were made by Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Morgan Stern. And hopefully, the next reading will come back with redline changes so that we can all see them and move forward with it.
So then, Councilmember Walter, can I clarify what that is? Was it with the...
The changes?
Changes.
Well, I can't reiterate them exactly the way they were worded, but I believe Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Morgan Stern, on the increase, it was the lesser of...
Right.
And I'm fine with that. And then I think Councilmember Morgan Stern talked about putting a cap on the vacancy in the foreclosures. And I think Councilmember Bagby said 10%, and I think he said 5%. So I think they... We need to have a discussion on some of those. But I don't know how you want to do it.
I want to have it right now so we can have a great version to come back so that we are all in line. So let's have that discussion right now.
And just to clarify, what I had heard is from, I think, both if it's sort of a vacancy where the mobile home unit gets moved off and it's a vacant space, then no limit. But if someone's selling their unit to a new resident or transferring it to a family member, then there would be a cap of some amount, is what I heard. I don't remember that amount.
I had said that on the rent, it should be limited to 3% a year or 70% of CPI, whichever is less. And then on the rent increases, I had said allow a 10% increase when the mobile home pad is vacated.
Is that on all vacated, whether it's in place or family?
Well, vacated means empty.
Okay. So then what if someone moves out of the park with an in-place transfer?
That's an in-place transfer. That's not... It's not what we're...
This is part of it. I know what I'm talking about here. So it's...
Yeah.
Okay, so we have no number on that one. What are your ideas? You said 10... You said 5%. Was that for all vacancies?
You know, what we could do is instead of saying, you know, if somebody gets evicted, no increase or this and that, we could just make it 5% for any vacancies and make it simple that way.
So that is the lowest number offered in the county, so I'm just...
Well, this is Cloverdale, and we have...
I understand.
Low income, and people are struggling even to buy food in this county.
And I'm not disagreeing. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to play a little bit of devil's advocate here. Members start to grow apart from market value and what they're paying. And so what's going to happen is as inflation goes up more than what these numbers do, the park owners are not going to be able to do the maintenance that they are doing currently and keeping them nice. And then on top of that, when they do it, they're going to turn around and put it on to the... At least 50% of it, I think is the number, on the backs of the renters as a supplemental. And if there's legal fees, that gets included in that as well, as I understand it. And so it ends up costing them more money by putting the lowest on every single thing because then they're going to start getting hammered on with all these supplemental bills. So that's why we had done it the way we did. We chose like the lowest for your normal, but then if people move out, well, they have the right to bring it up to market value at that point, and that's what we were doing. Alex, can you clarify where I was wrong in any of this?
No, you're generally right. I mean, I can't predict what a park owner would do, but you could imagine, let's say they need to make up money. If they can make up that money, make up money in order to receive a fair return. If they can make that up by charging higher rents for the new people, then they do that, and they're not going to be able to justify a special rent increase from everyone else. If they are not able to make up that rent from those people, then when they go there, you know, they'll say they're not making a fair return, and they'll apply to get one. And if the arbitrator grants them, that increase would be spread around everyone who's a current resident. Now, I can't predict whether the 3% a year is enough to make a fair return or not. You know, it's hard to know, but over time, what they'll mean, but that's the difference. You know, we've heard, I think, that expressed by the park owners at the subcommittee, that that allows them... Charging some for new residents allows them to sort of not be as pressured for current residents. I guess I'll add one thing, just for the council to consider, just because I know I mentioned this at the subcommittee level. When you have rent control that applies at the... For new mobile homes, like an in-place transfer, that doesn't necessarily make... Keep affordable... Doesn't necessarily keep living in the mobile home park affordable because the value of a mobile home that has rent control on it is more valuable than one that's not. So someone would offer more for one that is locked in at, you know, $500 a month than they would pay for one that's locked in at $1,000 a month. So it doesn't necessarily keep it as an affordable option. It might make it so that your rent's low, but you have to pay upfront for the unit. And again, like the exact numbers are hard to predict, but you can see, you know, someone's going to pay more for a lower rent than they would for a higher rent.
Well, you just pointed out why people pay points on their mortgages.
So we know that... I'm just going to try to wrap this up a little bit. We know that 3% or 70% of CPI, whichever is less, is direction at this point. Everyone's in consensus with that. Next thing we have to figure out is the vacancy control. It averages between 5% and 15% throughout the county, or no increase allowed, or no cap if it's a lawful vacancy. So there's a lot of different options here that are very wide. I hear a 5% and I hear 10%, correct?
I think a 10% increase, it just seems to be kind of in the middle. And again, I mean, it's pointed out to us over and over again that, you know, not only is... Are the folks who are in mobile homes are some of the most vulnerable among us. Statistically speaking, they're the lowest paid or the lowest earners in Sonoma County. So our rates should be lower. And I think that, you know, going to that 10% increase when a mobile home pad is vacated, that reflects the difference in Cloverdale. And I think that that's fair and reasonable compared to the other municipalities.
10%? 10%? Councilmember Walter?
No. How about if we can't do 5%, then we split the difference between 10 and 5?
Okay. And then let me... Before we get into that part, let's clarify that it's for in-place transfers that we're doing, correct? On that one?
How about for all vacancies?
Transfers. Yeah. You know, there are two issues. There are two main issues that we're discussing, and one is the limits on rents, and then what happens when there is a vacancy. The vacancies, again, are very rare. And that's probably the less urgent compared to the first, which is the limits of the rents being a certain percentage of year or a percentage of CPI, whichever is less. I think we're all agreeing on the "that is less" language. But if we are going to do this and protect the most vulnerable, I mean, just compared the numbers of 2% to 5%, and I think 3%, a lot of the advocates are... That they're supporting that. And, you know, that's that issue is... So many of the people who have spoken tonight are looking for that lower 3% per year or 70% of CPI, whichever is less. And, you know, we have on the table as well, on those transfer fees, a 10% increase just seems to be reasonable and fair. So, you know, that's just... Those are the two big issues that we're discussing, and that's where I'm going to come down on both of those.
So I'll be a third on this. I'll say there's no cap on the vacancy control, but there's a 10% on the in-place transfers.
I think we need to do any... We need to do a cap on any sort of vacancy control, whether somebody vacates the lot, whether somebody's evicted, whether it's an in-place transfer, whether somebody dies and the relatives move in. I think we need to definitely protect people, and we also want to make it so people can move into a mobile home park that are low income. So, you know, we don't want it to go up too high, and we definitely need vacancy control on all three of those things that I mentioned.
So as of right now, do we have three that support the way that we were just saying? Yep. 10% on in-place transfers. Vacancy control stays with no cap. Rent increase is 3% or 70% of CPI, whichever is less. Do we have... I see one head nodding, Councilmember Bagby. Does that sound accurate to you?
I'm sorry, can you restate it?
Yes, absolutely.
I just want to hear it one more time.
Yes. So we know the 3% or 70% of CPI, whichever is less. With vacancy control, it's no cap. With in-place transfers, it's a 10% cap. So...
Seven and a half, 10 of 7% instead of 10 of 5.
Well, right now, we have three, one. So...
Do they other... Sorry, can you bring up the other jurisdictions chart again? I'm sorry to tripping.
Nope. None of them have a cap on that.
None of them have a cap. Okay.
And the reason being is... And I asked the trailer park owners when we were in this meeting. I asked them what happens when they have one that they can't sell, because there was one that I had brought up that was in a park for several months that was new that they couldn't sell. And I said, is it because the rent is too high on the space? And they said, that doesn't happen. They said they just sold it. It just took some time. It just took some time. However, they said, if, if the market will dictate that, it'll dictate it on its own. So that's why they have that no cap on that one.
Could you clarify what you mean by no vacancy control?
So if you are living, and I apologize if I offend, if you're living in Briarwood and you own your trailer and you move out of Briarwood, they're going to fix up that spot for someone else to move in. They get to choose what the rent is on that spot. There's no control over that, what we choose here on that spot anymore.
But suppose somebody wants to move in there that's not rolling in money? Parks are supposed to be for people that are low income, not somebody moving into a...
But it's still, it's still, for it to, for it to be sold on the market or rented on the market, it has to be within the market rate that they will dictate by who wants to go in there or not.
And there's maintenance and everything will be done to that unit to bring it up. So those costs, by the owner has to be.
So does that sound accurate, Councilmember Bagby? Do you agree with that?
And honestly, you know, I, I know we, I'd like to get to a place tonight where we're, you know, mostly 95% happy because I think that if, if something doesn't work, something isn't working, we need to hear about it and be proactive about it. So I think that the, the recommendation on the table, we can go ahead and move forward with it. And then if there is significant concern from the, from the, from the community, we just need to be prepared that this may be a live-in document for a while. This, this is not the last that Sonoma County is going to hear about this. This is happening in cities all over California because many of the mobile home park owners are aging out. Things are, are changing hands. And it is the last affordable, de facto with a small A, affordable housing that so many communities have. So I think that we're, I think that we're pretty much in, in a good place right now to something that, that is adoptable and reasonable. But we just need to be prepared that if there are issues in the community, we're going to need to revisit this.
So are we saying 10% for in-place transfers?
Yes.
Okay. And what about if a relative dies and say their sons want to move in there?
So that, it's, it's in place.
Okay. So that's called an in-place transfer also?
So do we have good direction at this point? I don't think, it looks like we have enough nodding heads. Now there's. On a yearly basis for?
No, anytime they want an increase of that.
So, so, yes. So you, Alex, you want to explain how the CPI and the.
Yeah. So there's two ways to do, to do something like this. You could have them send notice every time they, you know, copy of their notice for whatever rent increase to the city. You know, that's a lot of paper. The other thing you could do is have them once a year report their rents and have that, that's sort of what, how a rent registry normally works, is once a year you report the rent for each space.
Actually, I'd recommend that we maybe send this to finance, admin and police because there may be an automated way that they could, we could put this online like we do our, our permit applications so that they could just go ahead and self-report, file it, submit it, and then, you know, perhaps set up some kind of an auditing procedure. But that's obviously something that's not on tonight's agenda, but there's a better way to do it than maybe cook it up on the dais. There might, you know, there might be services that are available to do this. We might, again, just want to have an online form, something like that. But I think that just that that's an administrative question that probably should go to finance, admin and police.
But as for right now, with this ordinance, you have good direction. Thank you. All right. We'll move on.
Mayor, if I can, just one, one quick comment. There, there was a, a public comment made about the arbitration process.
Okay.
Uh, I just wanted to appoint counsel to section 5.36090 of the ordinance. The staff understands that many of the jurisdictions that have implemented mobile home rent control do rely on the Sonoma County Community Development Commission. And that is certainly our intent if needed. In fact, the language in the ordinance, the draft ordinance does say the arbitrator may, but not is, but it's not required to utilize the Sonoma County Development Commission. And, and that's based on our direct conversation with staff. I, I think they're, they have staff concerns about their capacity to add another city. So it, it, it's not a reflection that we wouldn't want to use the Sonoma County Community Development Commission to serve as an arbitrator if necessary. It's, the ordinance just provides for the flexibility to designate and alternate should they not have the capacity to do so. So again, our, our intent, but, but I think ordinance was just to, to provide some flexibility in the case that they're unable to. So that, I just wanted to clarify that point.
Thank you.
Because of the public comments that were made tonight.
Thank you.
I, I wouldn't be surprised if those operations don't get updated at some point and they want people to submit on a website. So maybe we could just put a pin in that and say that we need to revisit that on how, what the best way is for the city of Cloverdale to gather that information.
Good? All right. Moving forward into I, new business.
I have one more comment.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I am hoping that at, after we resolve these current issues, that at another meeting, maybe later in the year, that we could definitely talk about zoning and have a discussion on zoning for mobile home parks so that somebody can't own one and decide to evict everybody and turn it into like a water park.
All right. I, one, ordinance repealing and replacing, oh, I'm sorry, moving on. Thank God. I, two, city of Cloverdale audited financial statements fiscal year 2022, 23. Does anyone need a break? Councilmember Walter?
Mayor, we have a, just a procedural question on the ordinance for the city attorney. Is, is counsel required to introduce and vote on that?
No, we're, we're going to have to introduce that at the next meeting with those changes. Uh, no, because there's two, we need to get the exact language in there for that.
So we'll, we'll bring it back for introduction.
If it was that one word, absolutely. So.
So Mayor, moving on to item, I, two, the, the item before you tonight are the audited financial statements for fiscal year 22, 23, which ended June 30th of, of 2023. The, the requested action tonight is to review and accept by motion the audited financial statements. A copy of the statements are included in your packet. The, the audited financial statements were presented to the Finance Admin and Police Subcommittee for review. At that meeting, we had a presentation by our auditor, Mr. Terry Krieg. Many of you are, are familiar with Mr. Krieg. We, after having proper accountancy for a number of years, we were, we had the opportunity to bring Mr. Krieg back. He worked diligently with our finance team. I want to acknowledge Susie for her work, as well as Shannon and the, and the finance team on getting all the required and necessary documentation and financial records to Mr. Krieg to be able to complete the audit. There's some really great news, in my opinion. And our, our finance director this evening is going to provide just a, a overview of some of the key financial highlights that were provided in, in the audit, particularly focusing on what's referred to as the management discussion and analysis. So maybe just a brief, a brief update by our finance director, Susie.
Thank you. I wanted to just say Terry would have been here if he could have. He had an, an emergency and could not be here tonight. But in your packet are the financial statements as well as the report from Mr. Krieg. And the report is to those charged with governance. That is a report directly to counsel and mayor, vice mayor, just so that you, for everything that he found. And he points out some very critical things there. Those of you that were at the Finance Admin and Police heard this. But the 2023 financial statements reflect a $42,000 increase in our general fund. This is important because we actually budgeted a $580,000 deficit. So there's a $622,000 positive net that, that happened. Also, the general fund ended with a balance of $7.9 million. And that's a $1.7 million increase over what we had budgeted. If you remember, last year we had a $1.7 million increase and then the 42,000, so 1.742, right? So over the last few years, last couple of years have been really good for the general fund. I just want to point out, and I think it's very important to acknowledge that these increases are based on one-time funds, ARPA funds, grant funds, some impact fees for developers. Couple other things that he points out is that the special retirement fund ended with a $1.2 million fund balance. That is 400 and some odd dollar, some odd thousand dollars more than what we expected. That is because when we refunded the 2020 bonds, we realized with the help of bond counsel that we were not getting all the taxes for the retirement fund. So we are getting lump sums and, and the amount of 450,000 for, I think, three years. And then we'll, those will go back to normal, right? But we'll just be getting normal. But right now we're getting large sums because we're making up. Also, one last thing is that we had $1.7 million positive for water, wastewater, airport. Airport actually saw a little bit of a decline of like 67,000. But the net position of water and wastewater together increased by 1.7 million. I will stop there, but if you have more questions or have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Walter?
No, I just want to, I just want to say that's great news on the ad valorem. You know, that's, that's something that the city is blessed to have. So I'm really glad that we can increase that by 400,000. So, thank you, Susie.
Great report. Thank you so much. It's way better than we were expecting and so thankful. Just, I really want to reiterate the one-time monies. And so we need to make sure our budgets don't, don't go into a major deficit spending the way that we have been. So we've already been through this. We don't need to say anything else. And I am so thankful for you guys and the hard work you've put in. It's been great. Anyone else up here before open to public? Seeing none. Anyone in the public want to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais.
Mayor, we're just asking tonight that counsel accept, accept the report by motion.
By motion?
Sound moved.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgansky?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler? Vice Mayor Walter? Sorry.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter, Vice Mayor Wheeler. Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you. All right. Moving on to I, three, discussion and consideration of the city of Cloverdale draft budget goal statements for fiscal year 2024 through 2026.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I can ask our city clerk to bring up the presentation this evening. A little bit of background, typically in advance of the, our budget workshop, counsel has the opportunity to review and discuss budget goals. And, up here, a little bit. Next, next slide. The, the purpose of goal setting is really to inform the, you know, our budget development process. A little bit of history, in the past, we, we went, we went through kind of a lengthy process of compiling goal statements from counsel, staff, planning commissioners. We'd conduct a workshop, prioritize a long list of goals, and then ultimately conduct a numerical ranking of each of those goals and, which would end up in a, our, our top 10 ranked goals. And what we saw expressed by counsel and the community was a general unhappiness with that approach because often the goals didn't quite reflect what was on our work plan. And at, at, at the end of the year, when we did accomplishments, it was very difficult often to tie the accomplishments to, to the list of goals because they tended to kind of be, I use the word bifurcated, if you will. So that doesn't undermine the purpose and need to establish goal statements. And goal statements are, you know, critical to reflect how you want to allocate and direct your funding. And it guides both allocation of, of staff as well as, as your budgets. So if I can, can, next slide, Mike? And next slide. In, in the previous year, we established a, a multi-year budget, whereas previously we had single-year budgets. And there were some real important aspects to move into a much, a multi-year budget. One is it saves a tremendous amount of time and effort. I mean, we were sitting down for months every year developing a budget. And now with a two-year budget, it, it really does make more strategic use of our time. Of course, now with Open Gov, it even makes it a lot more efficient in terms of budget development. So it saves a significant amount of, of staff time, but also counsel time in the process. In addition, I, I really believe that it helps to reinforce our, our long-term fiscal health because it widens your, your view on the financial situation, the financial picture of the city from 12 months now to, to 24 months. So it kind of broadens the, the time horizon. Next slide, Mike. With, with this goal-setting process, really, it, moving towards what I would call a, a work-plan-based approach, it's really focused on, you know, what, what's our, what, what are we trying to achieve? And, and, and that's a reflection of the work plan. Our, our counsel very closely manages our work plan through the, the council agenda, through our subcommittees, and, and, and direct oversight of staff, our, and particularly direction to your, to your, to your city manager. So what, what are we trying to achieve? We're, we're trying to identify, you know, specific achievable, meaningful objectives that can be completed within that two-year budget. And at the end of that is to show what the accomplishments were by tying directly those budget expenditures to, to our work plan. Next, next slide. What I've outlined here is, you know, what are, what are, what are some of the key important takeaways to a work-plan-based approach to budgeting and also strategic planning? Of course, we, we want to have a understanding of our goals and objectives, align with our organizational mission and vision, enhance accountability, transparency, foster adaptability and resilience. We can always, we can always update our work plan and, and modify the budget as needed while maximizing our, our resource allocation. When I say resource allocation, I mean both staffing and our use of financial resources and ultimately improve decision-making. Next slide. I won't, I won't go into, again, detail. This is just some of the importance of budget goals in municipal financial management. These really represent what I consider kind of best practices. You know, it's strategic, it's fiscally responsible, it's accountable. Again, mentioning, you know, being flexible and adaptable and enhancing our, our financial management strategy. Next slide. So in the development of our last two-year budget, we identified against seven key budget themes that were reflective of the work plan and was an acknowledgement of some of the ongoing conditions that we encountered. And that was really highlighted by our drought response. And so drought response was a, was a key budget theme. We dedicated a tremendous amount of staffing resources, budget resources to responding to the drought. In addition, we had a number of issues around information technology, particularly external threats that we were responding to. And the budget reflected the, a number of key investments that were necessary to improve our IT systems. And of course, on the heels of some of the major emergencies, we invested. And of course, on the heels of some of the major emergencies, we invested in emergency preparedness with Resilient Cloverdale and Clove Ready, and again, those initiatives were reflected as part of our work plan. The staff time was spent on them, budget resources were allocated towards them, and of course, we also saw in the previous year budget, you know, the issue of homelessness was a significant issue. We developed a strategic master plan. We held numerous subcommittee meetings, and again, that was a reflection of the dedication of staff time and resources, and that's why you saw it as a budget theme. Corresponding to those themes were a set of budget goal statements for the two-year budget, and I'm not going to read them all, but I encourage you to reference them. And so that's kind of sets the model for going forward for this next two-year budget. We've heard council really express the desire to make investments in key infrastructure, and one of the things you see here on the draft budget themes, which include water infrastructure, we had a discussion at your last meeting about the Cherry Creek tank as an example at the Public Works and Facilities Subcommittee. We have numerous discussions about the status of various water infrastructure projects like SCADA, and so that's something when we bring the budget forward, we believe will be a theme that really rises up to the top, is water infrastructure. In addition, we've heard council express the desire to invest time and energy and financial resources into a street and pedestrian improvement. So obviously, that was a kind of a conversation tonight around the Osti Road Apartments project. So you see that as a key budget theme. You will see that as a key budget theme in this year's budget. The other key themes, of course, I think are some longstanding goals, include revenue enhancement, which is kind of an ongoing need. I think we're going to be bringing forward a conversation with council about a potential ballot measure to enhance our revenue base, so that's reflected in that goal. Housing and homelessness continues to be a proposed theme, along with planning and sustainability. We got a lot of planning efforts underway with regards to updating our general plan, as well as, you know, other transportation planning programs. The, kind of a new budget theme reflected here is Parks and Recreation. We have been, you know, kickstart, we've kickstarted in the last two-year budget the development of a Parks and Rec program, and again, that's what we're going to be discussing with council, you know, additional investments in that space, and that's again reflected in this budget theme. So moving forward, next slide, Mike, our set of budget goal statements for each one of those themes. And again, what we're asking tonight is really just to review these statements, review the themes, give us any feedback if you think we're on target with respect to your key priorities and your key objectives. For each one of those themes, there's a developed set of objectives and implementation measures. What's not included at this point are the list of programs, projects, and initiatives, and that's what we, as staff, will be walking you through during the budget workshop, is key programs, key projects, key initiatives, and especially highlighting any changes to the budget. But you'll see a real focus on these seven themes. There's a lot to digest here in terms of the objective, the goal statement, implementation measures, if you want to kind of maybe, next slide, Mike. So you'll see, again, there's a number of description of the implementation measures and the goal statement, objective for each of those themes. Encourage council to review those, certainly have, provide me with any feedback that you may have, and we will incorporate updates to this for final presentation at your budget workshop. Again, the intent with the goal statements is to use, you know, to be strategic, to have a set of budget themes with tied to objectives that reflect what we want to complete with a set of implementation measures that will guide our work plan, which is ultimately backed up and supported by the budget. So that's really the theme of this presentation tonight. Again, I know there's a lot to digest as we've gotten later in the evening. I'm happy to dive deeper on any of this as you see fit, but I just want to pause there, given that there's been a lot of deliberation tonight on other agenda items. So, Mayor, I'm going to pause there, and I welcome your feedback. I think we can, the intent is again, on Tuesday, April thirtieth, to bring forward a, you know, finalized set of budget themes with implementation measures tied to specific initiatives, projects, programs, and activities that are being funded in the draft budget. But if council at this point has any recommendations or thoughts on these themes, we welcome your feedback. We want this to, again, help guide and inform the budget process. And just to speak briefly on that, we've been meeting pretty regularly. We've went through most of the budget. There's a few funds that we need to wrap up. Our finance director's been working on finalizing the revenue projections. So ultimately, what we plan to bring forward, you know, is a draft budget. I'm certainly eager to kind of see where we land budgetarily with respect to our fund balance, which was just presented as part of the audit, and again, using these themes and these implementation measures to guide, inform the expenditures that are included in your budget.
Thank you, David. Start? Is this supposed to take like three more hours? No one?
Do we have the time for the thirtieth?
What I wanted, yeah, what was the thirtieth?
The twenty-ninth.
I mean, the twentieth.
You said that, prepared for the thirtieth. What is that? What is that? Is that our budget session?
Budget workshop.
I won't be here. Can I do it? I'll have to do it virtually.
I might have to come in first.
Well, if, you won't be, okay.
I'll be out of state.
Then we'll have to work on defining another date.
I apologize. I didn't know that we had set one, so.
I must have misunderstood, Mayor. I didn't.
I didn't either. Whatever everyone is fine with. You can have it without me, absolutely.
Yeah, and you can zoom in.
We'll have to include where you're from, where you're going. I doubt anyone's going to travel out of state to.
Good luck. But absolutely.
Members can participate remotely.
Yeah, if we can, great. If not, I'll make it happen. It's not a big deal. Well, I'll. So David, I apologize. I thought we didn't know that, so.
Well, one thing we could do, we, you know, we have a council meeting on the twenty.
Twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth. We could hold a budget workshop as part of the council meeting.
How's the schedule look? Because I'd be okay with that. If the agenda's light, let's do it.
I will have to, the budget may not come until, I mean, it's, we would have to finalize it that Thursday for the Tuesday preceding.
No? I see Susie's head. Can you do it on the first meeting of May or is that too late at that point?
Well, our finance director's gone, so that's why, Susie, I'm suggesting it earlier rather than, because otherwise, we're moving it into late May.
The rest is before the twenty-fifth, the day after our meeting here? That's open? That's the twenty-fifth, a Thursday?
Thursday.
April.
April, sorry. But that only gives you one more day, really. We might not have it the night before, so it's. That's kind of on your shoulders, so you tell us why. You know, if it's not possible, we're okay with it. You want Thursday? Is that what you're saying? You want to do it?
What's the date on Wednesday?
It's the twenty-fourth. It's our normal, we'll have it in our normal meeting. Normal city council meeting, that'll be the agenda.
Will we have the packet ready by the eighteenth? Well, the council agenda would be out. The agenda goes out on the eighteenth.
If we do the twenty-fifth, we can do it with the special meeting agenda.
Right, which is only twenty-four hours.
Let's just do that.
Like a closed meeting?
Nine AM.
Nine AM, but not until twenty-two. Ninety-two?
Yeah. Okay. I don't see that being a problem. I think that it'll be done by lunch probably, hopefully fingers crossed, but.
We'll plan Thursday, April twenty-fifth. It'll be a special meeting, so.
Yeah, that's better, because then you only have twenty-four hours to post, so. It's a lot easier for more time.
Perfect.
Councilmember Morgansker said it will be a private meeting. It would still be a public meeting, and folks will still be able to attend. It just, the agenda isn't legally required to be sent out a week in advance like normal agendas.
Twenty-four hour notice with the special.
We'll have to check with the fire station if we still want to use that. Please make sure it's available.
At nine AM.
Right, which I think right now is fairly light.
I'll just sleep at the fire. Where are we having?
All right, so let's.
But if council has, you know, if you want to offer your feedback offline on the budget themes.
Well, David, I think that you and Susie and Kevin have done a good job with this. I meet with you every Monday. We discuss it every Monday, so I don't have anything else to say. I think the number one word is implementation of what we've set up with a lot of things, so we're doing well. So I'm not going to say anything else, because we say it all the time. Does anyone else have anything about the goals or anything they want to see different?
I do. Newsom has made it now so council members can make nine-hundred-and-fifty a month for a stipend rather than, you know, five-hundred-and-fifty-five. And so I think it would be great if we discuss it, and if we did ever vote it in and approve it, it wouldn't even happen until December twenty-two.
Okay, so that'll be something that maybe you're prepared with, what it costs and shows.
Also, maybe food for thought for council, the approach that staff has been using as we develop the process for any new or major initiatives that may have a financial impact, we're putting it on a discretionary list, and the intent is, once we have kind of more concrete budget numbers, we'll ask council for your feedback and direction on those discretionary items. I think that we could put that item on the discretionary list, associated with, you know, a budget number, what that looks like, and then that can be part of your deliberation. I mean, we're hoping that there's going to be room in the budget to add those items, or some of them, but that's, you know, and what this does is, this gives us time if, you know, to take council feedback, make some additional changes to the budget. If we need to make cuts, we can, you know, give us direction to do that, or, you know, add items, but the intent will be to walk councils best we can through really just major changes to the budget where there may be significant differences from the current two-year to the proposed new two-year.
As nice as it shows, it shows the needs and wants, so it's a great breakdown, so thank you.
So where will the meeting be? At the firehouse or?
Just have to confirm. We had confirmed the thirtieth, but we'll check on that date.
Weren't we talking about the twenty-fifth now, or what day are we talking about?
Yes, twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I'll check with the fire station, make sure it's available. If not, we'll find an alternative location.
Thank you. All right. Subcommittee reports. All agendas, approvals, and media are available on the website, unless anyone has anything else to talk about any. City and schools coming up. Let's see, councilmen reports, we have one written. Anyone else have anything they want to speak about? Legislative reports, we have the support for the Sonoma County Transit Low to No Grant.
Yeah, letters in your packet signed by the mayor in support of Sonoma County Transit's initiative for funding for electric buses.
City manager report?
Just want to remind council that tomorrow evening is the Sonoma County Mayor and Council Members Association meeting in Cotati on May fifteenth, just something for your calendar. Russian River Water Forum is going to be holding their next meeting, meeting number eight. I received, previously, I received direction from council to establish a presentation by the E.L. Russian Project Authority. I've had various conversations with Sonoma Water in regards to the most recent plans, which we included in our newsletter about a new pumping system. The staff at Sonoma Water are deferring to Supervisor Gore coming and presenting, and so we're just trying to work with him on a calendar date to come make a presentation to council on the status of the E.L. Russian Project Authority.
How about one with Russian River? They're coming here on what date, you said?
Oh, with the Russian River Water Forum, the next meeting that is scheduled for Wednesday, May fifteenth, and it's just via Zoom.
Can we check in with them, maybe have them do a presentation as well, or?
I can.
I think it's kind of the other side of the coin here. All right. Council direction on future agenda items. Love it. All right. Meeting is adjourned, eight forty-nine. Thank you all.
Eight what?
Eight forty-nine.